Excuse me. Your mic is off, sorry.
Going to start today's meeting, first meeting of 2023. Say I'm glad everybody made it here safe. The advantage of driving slow enough to stay on the road. We're going to have our meeting today, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, in Lyon County Administrative Complex. Today's agenda, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners will convene as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serves as the Liquor Board, Central Line Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch. Roll call. We have Commissioner Henderson in chambers, Commissioner Jacobson, and Commissioner Hockaday, and we have Commissioner-elect sitting here waiting to be sworn in. invocation, let's see John Poundstone from Joint Church, did he make it? He's okay, he's on, good. All right, Mr. Poundstone, we are ready for the invocation. Everybody will please rise and stay up for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Good morning and begging the Commission's pardon for my informal address, a bit of snow clearing this morning for a few hours. Heavenly Father, we come before you so grateful that we could join together and have safe passage on these roads. We thank you for this moisture. We ask your divine hand in saturating our land slowly and carefully and that our road crews and our people and our citizens remain safe. We ask for protection over our property and our people. Your holy scripture father says clearly that once these officers are in place, they have your full faith and backing. May our citizenry, may all of our churches come to honor and respect that. May we pray for the commission and all officers and our employees regularly. Father, I ask you for your presence, your wisdom, your guidance and your direction for this new season with our new people, for the agenda today. May this truly be a season where wisdom, peace, innovation, and solution shines. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Henderson, would you please do the Pledge, please? Please join me in the pledge.
Thank you. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comments after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk, which will be our podium up there. And I will have a timer set. One additional thing that I'll do for any public comment today will be that when you get 30 seconds or two minutes and 30 seconds in, I'll raise my hand to let you know that you need to kind of wrap up your comments to fit it into the three-minute timeframe. For possible action, review and adopt the agenda. Oh, yeah, do we have anybody for public? I didn't see anybody jump up, so I moved along. Anybody on Zoom? Hands up.
Nobody on Zoom.
Thank you, all right. So, review and adoption of the agenda for possible action. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, anyone hear anybody? Good. Our time certain, 9:00 AM, we're past that. For possible action, we're going to be swearing in the newly elected officials and re-elected officials. So Judge, I think you'll be able to do that for us and all of us that are going to be sworn in can come forward. We'll also take a short break after that, if you don't mind, so that pictures can be taken, you know, maybe five minutes worth of pictures and then we'll get right back to the agenda.
Just like to thank all of you for inviting me to do this. It's probably been over 25, 27 years since I sat as a deputy DA over there. And these were some of the more fun times. When everybody would come in, everybody's anxious, excited. We had a long election. Now in the position where we can start making decisions. The last time I was here, I said a few words about peaceful transitions of power. Two days later, they stormed the Capitol, so I'll keep my words really brief. And just wish you all the best of luck and the wisdom of Solomon and the patience of Job. All right, so if you raise your right hands and repeat after me, I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that I will bear true faith, allegiance and loyalty to the same any ordinance, resolution or law of any state notwithstanding and that I will well and faithfully perform all the duties of the office of state and office on which I'm about to enter. So help me God or under the pains and penalties of virtue.
You're gonna get your pictures and stuff. Hey, be careful. Yeah, you take pictures and stuff, go for it. I'll get out of the way. Take seats if you're going to stay for the meeting. If you're going to remain in the meeting, please take your seats, we'll get started. Otherwise, have a great day and a safe drive to your destination. Okay, moving to our next time certain, 6B. Time certain, 9:00 AM. For possible action, elect the Board of County Commissioners Chair and to fix the term of office for the chair as required by NRS 244.070. And I see the county manager is at the podium.
Andrew Raskin, interim county manager for the record. So I just kind of wanted to go over real quick the duties of the chair. And while I'm up here, I might as well go over the duties of the vice chair as well. So the chair oversees the meeting and runs the meeting. They attend the agenda review and they appoint, or excuse me, they make the nominations for the Planning Commission and the Board of Equalization. And so I just wanted to give you just a brief overview of that so that everyone is aware, the vice chair backs up the chair when the chair is not here, so. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any, but I just wanted to provide that brief overview before we get started.
Any questions from commissioners? Okay, no questions. So if we're ready, then we will take nominations for Board of County Commissioners Chair. Let any input?
A, my input, I mean, I would be interested. We'll see how it goes.
I would I would like to throw my support toward Commissioner Henderson as well. I feel he attends more outside meetings and is more active in-state than than anyone on the board. I don't think this should be a popularity contest. I think this should be what's, who will do the best job for our board, representing the board, not just countywide, but statewide. And I just feel that Commissioner Henderson is is very active and will and will represent Lyon County in a, as he always has. He's very active, like I said, inside and out, so I would support Commissioner Henderson for the chair.
Is that a nomination?
Yes, sir. But I would like to hear everyone else, this, I chairman or vice chair. I appreciate this process in the past couple of times. I feel like nobody's had a chance to say anything. It's been nomination, second vote done, so I want to thank you for how this is being done today.
Any, any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to support you to be chair. And if you take that nomination too.
Okay, so it looks like we have nomination, vote on the first nomination that was, you were going to nominate then?
So, yeah. Just to provide some clarification, it would be a motion similar to any any other agenda item, so I don't, if you want to put it in the form of a motion, then that would be my recommendation.
So it's a motion versus a nomination, a motion to elect, so Scott, you were, you had the floor at this point?
I make a motion to elect Dave Hockaday as the Commissioner Chair and to fix the term for the year of 2023 into 2024 until someone else is elected into that position.
I'll, I'll second that, I don't mind taking the position here. So we do have a nomination in a second on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote for myself, aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the motion does not pass or it's actually tied. So what we're looking at is another motion then. And do I have a motion for nomination of Commissioner Henderson?
I'll make a motion for Commissioner Henderson to be the Chair of Lyon County Commission.
I'll second it, okay, got a motion in a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
I jumped the gun.
Okay, those opposed, the nay. Okay, so we have two, two tie on that. We are now kind of, as I've said in the past, it's other meetings, not here, but we may have the same thing over and over again. Unless we have some way to
I'd like to make another motion, I'd like to make another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for Dave Hockaday to be the interim chair until we get a full board. As soon as a full board's appointed, then I would come back up.
I think we had a discussion.
So I, Andrew Raskin, interim county manager for the record.
Before that second, just before that second, it was
So, so there's, there's three different ways that we can handle this today. So we have to have a chair. So we can take motions until we come up with a chair. We can go through that process. We can appoint someone on the interim until the fifth commissioner is appointed by the governor. Or we can draw from a deck of cards, the high card becomes the next chair. That can be done one of two ways, where the the next card then becomes the vice chair or they can be a separate process, the vice chair can be a separate process altogether, that's up to the board. So we can go with any one of those three options.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor to appoint interim until the fifth commissioner is selected by the governor. And I have a feeling this is going to come out the same way. I would second that. So all in favor of that motion, say aye. I'm, say aye, those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, so I would say that that option is off the floor. And the next option would be to keep doing this the rest of the day and not go home until late, or we can draw from a deck of cards.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm perfectly willing to cut the cards with one being chair and one being vice chair.
So you're going to make that a motion then to do that card cut with vice, with the chair and vice chair?
Wait a second, because now we're opening it up to all, all those things. And if that's the case, I'm going to self-nominate myself to be on that deck of cards.
Do we, I'm not sure, I'd have to ask the district attorney.
I'm not sure, but nobody nominated Mr. Keller, so I, he can't throw his name in the ring, he wasn't nominated.
I'm going to have to defer to the district attorney's office on this. Steve Ride, District Attorney. The card draw would be for those that have been nominated to serve as chairman.
Mr. Vice, if you would like a motion. Okay, I would move that that Commissioner Hockaday and Commissioner Henderson cut a deck of cards with the high card to serve as chair for 2023 until the first meeting of 2024. And the low card serving as vice chair for 2023 to the first meeting of 2024.
And I'll second that. Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so it's four, zero, it will pass with the cut of the cards. And that will be the winner of the cut will be chair and the loser basically will be vice chair or winner as the case may be.
All right, so I have a brand-new set of cards, they're not open, so I will
They've been casino used, but they
Well, they are still sealed, so I will
Come down, it's been a bad way to do things.
As they say in Vegas, shuffle up and deal. Everybody's entitled to useless information. That's how he knows.
All right, so how do you want to, how do you want me to do this? All right, there they are. We can certainly do that. All right.
Given that they were separate, 6B and 6C were separate items, we might need to read 6C into the
We will, do we need to do 6A, 6B again? We can make it really easy. I, I moved that we elect Commissioner Hockaday as chair for 2023 to the first meeting of 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and I will make a motion on 6C that we elect Commissioner Henderson as vice chair and fix the term of office for the vice chair as required by NRS 244.070. That would be the first, I think, for the first meeting in 2024.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, votes four, zero. And we are past that, super. Okay, moving right along. Yes, we'll get to lunch. And, and thank you, everybody, for working through this. I kind of figured it would be a little bit like that and I'm just glad that we could get through that. Everything here is business, never anything personal. We're definitely going to work together and keep the county moving in the right direction.
Mr. Chair, if I may? Yes, just a comment, I also want to thank everybody for working through that. I think it's good that we have two commissioners that both are willing and capable and want to serve as chair. And I look forward to working with Commissioner Hockaday and making this our commission operate as smoothly as possible. We're never all going to agree, but we can disagree agreeably. Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks for the comments. So I'm looking at item 6D. Time certain, 9:30, we're past that, so we're good to go. For presentation only, county manager to present a workshop on roles and responsibilities of the Lyon County Department. For presentation only, county manager to present a workshop on roles and responsibilities of the Lyon County departments. No?
Sixty is at one.
That's his third of January also. I don't know where that one came from.
We hadn't made a change there in a.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Oh, there's yours. Oh, this one here. Yeah, sorry about that. I had somehow or another, I had an old agenda before the change was made. So six D time certain nine AM. Again, we're past that. Public hearing bill number twenty-three dash zero one for possible action approved. An ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title One, Chapter Four, General Penalty and Title Eight, Chapter One, Section One. Definitions, Chapter Ten, Section Three, citations, Chapter Eleven, Section Nine, Enforcement of Provisions and Section Ten. Violation and penalties by designating certain vehicle and traffic related criminal misdemeanors as civil infractions consistent with Assembly Bill one sixteen enacted by the eighty-first session of Nevada Legislature. And we, of course, had newspaper notice, Assembly Bill one sixteen, twenty twenty-one Nevada Legislature Civil Infraction Ordinance Track Changes in Civil Infraction Ordinance Clean Version. So we've got the clean version at this point, and we're ready for your presentation on that, sir.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Stephen Ride District Attorney. This is an ordinance that we're cleaning up some of the county code provisions to allow for the civil infractions where, which were adopted by the legislature in twenty twenty-one. They're effective January one of twenty twenty-three. And so this ordinance is some minor changes just to include that definition and that penalty for minor traffic offenses. As you can see, when you review some of the county code provisions, the, our traffic code is a little antiquated. This is not an update of that whole code. It's just to add this civil infraction provision. On the implementation of AV one sixteen, the courts have been busy in training. A new system has been implemented within the last month, I think. So they're, they're working the kinks out of that. So it's going to be a bit of a bumpy ride for the next probably couple of months. Law enforcement's been working on the citation side of things. I think that's mostly going forward. However, I think there's some things to work out on that. This is just part of that puzzle as we, we implement this new program. And I'm sure the board will hear, hear more from the courts and our office and law enforcement as it moves forward to let you know how it's working. But this is just the one piece to update the county code. So today I'm asking that you approve the ordinance as committed, Chair Hockaday stated. It's been published and it's ready for approval if that's the board's desire.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this ordinance?
Uh, do you, are we going to have Chairman Hockaday? Are we going to have discussion after the motion or is this time to ask questions?
Well, go ahead, ask questions. That's good.
Okay.
Appreciate whatever you need to do, sir.
In a nutshell, Mr. Ry, thank Chairman Hockaday. In a, in a nutshell, in a nutshell, share. In reading through this, I'm no legal expert. Luckily, I've avoided the law, but it seems like some of this is reducing fines in a lot of areas. And so can you describe to me the difference between a civil penalty and a misdemeanor?
Yes, so the, the biggest difference is a misdemeanor is a criminal act. So along with that comes possibilities of things like jail time, fine up to a thousand dollars. Arrest warrants, other things like that, sanctions that are available. None of those are available with a civil infraction. And so the plan with the civil infractions is they would be collected in a different manner. Either with suspension of driver's license or through collection agencies, that sort of thing. That, I think, is the biggest difference that you would see between the civil infractions and misdemeanors. Now, some of the traffic things that we see frequently, such as driving without a license, suspended license. Some of those things remain criminal cases. And so it's oftentimes the person will get pulled over, they get a speeding ticket and they're driving on a suspended license. That would still be handled. This, the suspended license is handled as a criminal. The speeding is handled as a civil. So I don't know if that answers your question.
That, that helps me considerably and, and Chairman Hockaday, if I may. So are these, in your opinion, good changes? Not that it matters. I think we're mandated to, to vote for this, so.
Right, I think they're, yeah, they're, they're necessary changes.
Okay.
And I, there are definitely concerns with the new civil infraction system and how that's going to work. Because I know there's, the courts and others rely on administrative assessments. And so collections can affect those dollars and affect your budget for certain departments and, and agencies. So that's, I think there's some concern about how that's going to work, but other than that, it is adopted and moving forward. And so this ordinance is a part of that.
And then Chairman Hockaday, if I may ask our new sheriff, Mr. Pope, a question?
Go for it.
No, you didn't have to swallow your candy. Thank you and congratulations, sir. So we got the legal end of it from a sheriff's and police officer standpoint. This seems like quite a bit of change for you and your department. Is that, do you feel it's all going to be for the better, for the worse? How do, how does your department, how do you feel about?
Sheriff Brett Pope for the record. You know, it, it's a new system that we have to try out. Taking the criminal aspect out of it clearly is a challenge for the sheriff's office. And it's something that we're going to have to make adjustments to. The warrants, the way I understand it, the warrants are going away for a lot of these crimes. So our records division has to purge these warrants. Dispatch has to purge these warrants out of NCIC or records has to take them out of NCIC one or the other. And it'll, it'll be a challenge, just like you need to watch it. But we'll be able to work through and work around it. I know our, our Brazos, our ticket writing system's being updated to take the civil infractions in mind, so we can still issue those citations for civil infractions as well.
All right, and, and one last thing, Chairman Hockaday, if I may, does this, are you anticipating any extra cost to your department that may come back on the board with doing any of this?
Not that I'm aware of it, but stop.
All right, thank you, sir. Again, congratulations.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Super. Commissioner Harrison?
Something.
And I, I did have a couple of questions and you answered them for me. Number one is the cost. You know, some of the infractions are twenty-five dollar fine, and I just don't see how administratively that's going to cover our costs for paperwork. The other thing too with Sheriff Pope, I, you know, my first degree was in criminal science. And, and when you mentioned the, the crime, we can't say that anymore. It's got to be an infraction. So we're going to have to watch our language now when it comes to PD people doing some traffic actions that aren't legal. Okay? But that was my biggest concern for the county is the amount of money that we'll bring in will be so limited that it's going to be tough to cover the costs of handling some of these infractions, so.
Yeah, and the bill includes provisions to, to give the sheriff's office the authority they need to do investigations and that sort of things that often accompany traffic stops. And so we're confident that that will not impair their ability to, to enforce public safety.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll.
I'll make a motion, Chairman Hockaday. I'd like to vote to, or make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title One, Chapter Four, General Penalty and Title Eight, Chapter One, Section One. Definitions, Chapter Ten, Section Three, citations, Chapter Eleven, Section Nine, Enforcement of Provisions and Section Ten, Violation and Penalty by designating certain vehicle and traffic related criminal misdemeanors as civil infractions consistent with Assembly Bill one sixteen, one hundred sixteen, excuse me, enacted by the eighty-first session of the Nevada Legislature.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second, but any other discussion? No discussion? Have any discussion from the public? I don't see any hands. I guess we are.
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, I guess we will take a vote. All those in favor of the motion approving the Bill one sixteen and our rewrite of it? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So vote is four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. District Attorney Ry. Presentation of awards and a recognition of accomplishments. Do we have any today? Nope.
None today.
County manager says no. Commissioner County Manager reports. I'll start down with Commissioner Jake.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. First, I'd like to start off just by apologizing to everybody, and I know we had a bunch of people in the room. I just got stuck behind slow vehicles and I'm not going to pass in that weather, so I apologize. It took forever to get down here today. I left, I thought in plenty of time. Obviously, I was twenty minutes late, so. I, I apologize to everybody, especially our law enforcement that had a lot better things to do than sitting here and wait on my, on me. So I apologize. With that, I'd like to thank the crews for getting sandbags, the roads, the streets as clear as possible. We had, I believe, eight inches of snow, maybe up to ten at my, my house, and there was snow the entire way here, so. Want to thank them, my past half dozen N dot trucks, county rigs with snow blades and whatnot, so want to thank them. Hopefully, the powers we stay, we started to all Lyon County residents, all northern Nevada for that matter. Being without power in this type of weather is, is adds to the stress, so I hopefully all power gets restored. And then finally, I just want to thank all of those that ran for public office and congratulate those that won their races. That is all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. And we're just glad, as I said, that you made it in safe. You know, being light is not a problem. We all know what happened and thank you for the apology, but I really don't think it was necessary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
I'd like to thank everybody that voted for me and congratulate everybody that won their races. And also I'd like to thank the county for getting me prepared for, for my first meeting, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have much. This, it's been a a interesting start to the year, to say the least. I do want to thank county staff and our interim county manager for handling the situation this weekend. I think, I think you guys did really a good job. I know that, you know, Andrew and I have had several phone conversations and he was out in front and very proactive, and I certainly appreciate that. And I look forward to working with the, my fellow commissioners this year and be nice when we have the fifth seat filled.
Good, good. All right. Thank you for your comments. I also want to reiterate the fact that we had county workers out the whole holiday weekend, clearing snow and opening up warming areas. I, I just, it really was not a shock, but it was just so gratifying to see the dedication that our employees have taking care of the, the citizens of this county. I'm just really happy to see the, as I said, the dedication to get the job done and get us through this. I know we still have some people down on power. And I know that Nevada Energy is doing their best to get everything up, but if you read anything about the situation, there were over a dozen poles that were on the ground and miles and miles of wire that was laying on the ground. So they really had a significant job across basically central, west, west-central Nevada. Lot, a lot of problems. That's about all I have at this point in the first part of the year, and I will go ahead and go to the next section here of County Manager Reports, so.
All right, thank you. Andrew Haskin, interim county manager. Appreciate your recognition of staff. They've done an amazing job with this storm. We have been very busy. We started last week with getting all the sandbag locations ready to go for flooding. We were very fortunate in that the storm turned to snow a little bit earlier than anticipated. Minimize any kind of flooding impacts. I know I was driving around Saturday in the Dayton area prior to it turning to snow, and we already had some water over some roadways and stuff in the Mark Twain area. But for the most part, there weren't really any flooding impacts. You touched a little bit on the power situation. Obviously, it's a, been a pretty difficult situation for NV Energy. Everyone was prepared for the flooding event, but when the snow hit with the very wet, heavy snow, brought down a lot of trees, a lot of power lines, and it created some, some situations there. We have had crews out. I know Saturday, Dustin and his crews have been, were out. David Burketa and his crews were out as well, monitoring things. We had Shayla help with, and her team with opening up the, the warming shelter in Dayton. I really want to throw a shout out to them because they got that going really quick. There's quite a bit of work that goes into setting up one of those shelters or centers. Especially when it snows, because you got to first get a crew out there to clear the, the driveway and sidewalks and everything before you can even think about opening it. So we had facilities out, out and about, and they were doing that as well. And you got to get all the supplies and stuff and get team, staff members there to get things set up. So just really want to throw a big shout out to the team. They've done an amazing job. I know we still have some weather coming in Wednesday and Thursday, so I encourage everyone to be prepared for that. My understanding is the storm is not supposed to drop as much snow, but it is supposed to be a colder storm that does bring more snow. So just today, we had our new emergency manager start. She was going to be here for an introduction. However, she is actually on a call right now with the Department of Emergency Management. So addressing other concerns with, with the ongoing power outages and whatnot. So I will have to bring her back to introduce her to another time, but we were, I, I am excited to introduce it to her. Other than that, we're still, still working. We still got snowplows out. One of the situations we're monitoring right now is just some of our mountain top sites with power being out. We're taking a look and making sure that those generators stay running. I know Dustin also wanted to be here to give an update, but he's also on the D meeting, but he's taking a look at the propane levels and everything on all the mountain top sites and making sure that, that everything stays functional for, for everything. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Not, not a question, just, just a comment. I also took a couple of tours around the Dayton area, both Friday and Saturday. And the retention bases at the new Websteron Expansion were doing their job. They're very little water in them. And went down all the way in the Dayton Valley Road. You know, we had a lot of citizens express concerns down there and didn't see any issues, so I was really happy to see that.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Commissioner Keller. I had, I had one comment that kind of came up the very first night, you know, New Year's Eve. We used a lot of blankets back when we had the fire evacuation over Smith Valley. And the first thing that popped in my head, did we replace our blankets? We had the cots. We pretty much got rid of all the blankets because it's going to cost more to clean and sterilize them, but I thought certainly can't warm people up if we don't have blankets and laying on an empty cot. So what's the point of having the, the backup material if we use it and don't replace it? Did we replace it?
You know, that's a good question that I will have to, I'll have to look into. So we ended up not using the blankets or the cots at the warming centers. We, we just didn't have a need. We had about five people stay at the Dayton one. I know the city of Yerington, I do want to throw a shout out to the city of Yerington as well. They opened up a warming center here at City Hall. And they didn't have anybody the first night, but my understanding is the second afternoon and night they did, so. But we didn't, we had all that stuff on site in case we needed it. I believe there were blankets and stuff in the trailer, but I will double check. But we didn't, we had all that stuff on site in case we needed it. I believe there were blankets and stuff in the trailer, but I will double check. I don't want to say for sure on on the record and have that not be true, but I will. I'm pretty sure all that stuff was was proposed.
Okay, good. Because I know we use over a hundred and like a hundred and fifty blankets, maybe even more, and I just want to make sure we had enough for the next emergency and obviously, we did for this one. Let's make sure we have enough for the next one that maybe could be worse. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, elected official reports. Do we have any elected officials? Nobody wants to talk on that? So I will go on with appointed official reports, and we have a comptroller coming up. Oh, no.
Josh, well, the comptroller, I just wanted to add a little bit of information that Andrew gave you, Brad, to a little bit of information Andrew gave you. On the mountain top sites, when we put the the battery banks in there so that we wouldn't run on propane the entire time, it would lengthen out the amount of of usage that we can get out of the sites without having electricity up. We put those battery banks in approximately ten years ago. So we would already identified for this upcoming budget year to put a request in to replace those battery banks because they are reaching the end of their life. As an example, through this, through this storm, and currently right now, there is no power still to Rob Peak or Eagle Ridge or White Hill, or I should say Eagle Ridge has it, Rob Peak, Pine Grove and and White Hill. Currently have no power to them. So we're running on batteries and generators. The batteries on Rob Peak are lasting approximately five hours before we have to start the generator, run it for a certain time period and then shut it down. So Hayes has been manually starting that every five hours for the past few days. And Pine Grove, the batteries are actually a little bit older than they are there. So we're running that site. They only last about thirty minutes. We're running that site on propane the whole time. We're looking at contingency plans to send some additional propane up to the top of that mountain, which is not an easy proposition this time of year. We've contacted some contractors to help us out with that. So we're evaluating those as we speak, but just so you're aware, we may need to replace some of those batteries earlier the next budget year, and we may be coming back to the board for that, but just to be
Thank you.
Just just enough why I cost.
The battery banks are approximately twenty five thousand per materials per site. And the, we may also look at adding another thousand gallon tank of propane up to Pine Grove because this time of year it gets hit pretty hard. Rob Peak, we did upgrade that one to two thousand gallons a while back. We have Eagle Ridge at a thousand gallons and a thousand gallons up at Pine Grove and five hundred gallons up at White Hill because we can get to White Hill usually fairly.
Has there been any thought of installing solar?
So we've looked at that. The challenges you have is normally, the times when the power is out, you don't get a lot of solar and we actually used to have solar up on some of those peaks. Some of the racks were there. They got damaged in the storm. We never replaced them because with the winds that we get on those mountain tops, it's a very expensive proposition to compose up. So we figured it's probably cheaper for us, more more feasible for us long term wise to put the the battery backup and the propane on those sites than to add the solar. We did look at solar and it was probably about fifty thousand, I think, per site at the time. And we're like, you know what? Let's just put some good batteries up there. Let's increase the size of the propane tanks and we'll refill them before the season starts, which we do each year.
Thank you.
Mr. Keller, Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, I just, you know, just quick calculation. Sounds like we're going to need about a hundred thousand dollars in for batteries and propane tank and the filled propane tank. So.
A good guesstimate. We were looking at about sixty seven thousand dollars for the batteries because some of them are a little newer than the others. But yeah, by the time you get through all of that and and you get it installed, it takes
Back, come out of contingency then? If we have to do it now?
If we have to do it now, yes.
Okay.
We'd come back to the board.
Thank you. Any other appointed officials? Oh, Shayla. Okay. Yeah, let's recognize Shayla Holmes.
Good morning. Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. For the record, I just wanted to let you guys know at that Dayton Senior Center site for the warming center, we did have twelve individuals utilize those services from the time that we opened on the first through this morning. So our last two individuals left in the wee hours of the morning there. So twelve folks were served from that. Some some came and went, you know, based off of the day and taking care of other needs, but the majority of folks were there definitely in the evening hours when it got super cold. But we did not have to crack open that trailer to get to blankets. When folks called, we let them know to pack and bring things that they may need. But we didn't end up with anybody staying significantly long enough to to need anything additional from us. The other thing I wanted to let you guys know about is January twenty six is the annual point in time count where our department goes out and conducts the homeless count. So if anybody was interested in participating in the point in time count on January twenty six, please reach out to me and I will get you connected with the coordinator, Heather Benson, and get you assigned to a search team. And that is all.
Thank you. And again, thank you so much for helping out the holiday weekend. I know you're out there taking care of the people here. Anybody? Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Shayla, be sure and thank your crew and and everybody because I know you're not just opening up this shelter, but you're also checking on a bunch of your people that you're supporting. So just want to thank you for all the time and support that you give some of our more needy people in Lyon County. Well done.
Thank you. I'll make sure I pass all of that on to the staff.
Thank you. Do we have any other appointed officials? Mr. Homestead, you're on.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Dustin's crews and my crews for all the snow clearing they've been doing. They didn't get to celebrate much of a New Year's this year, and we've got more to come. So we'll get to your buildings as soon as possible. Bear with us. We don't have the resources for, you know, a one in ten year event like this, but we'll get to you sooner or later to clear your buildings up. So and congratulations to all the new officials and look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Homestead?
Chairman Hockaday, just thank you. Thank your crews and Justin's as well. Thank you, Mr. Homestead. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes. Mr. Homestead, I like to add my thanks to to your crew and to Dustin's crews as well. You guys are out there and as always, you put Lyon County first, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'd like to reiterate that. I have several times, but specifically, I know your group was out there working hard all weekend. So thank you very much. Any other? I don't see any other signs. Andrew, do we have anybody else? Looks like just one page. So.
No one else. I do have a request to move item twenty eight and twenty B up as the sheriff has to get to get over to swearing his new command staff. So if we can do those next, that would be great.
So. Let's go ahead then and do twenty eight and twenty B. We'll move that up to as of right now, we'll move into twenty A for possible action, approve the elimination of one vacant lieutenant position and the creation of one deputy position and use the additional savings to keep a grant funded deputy position as the regional gang grant funding stops on December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Sheriff Pope, you're on.
Sheriff Brad Pope, and thank you for moving it up. We've got families of command staff waiting at the sheriff's office to swear them in. As it says, I initially wanted to eliminate two lieutenant positions and replace them with as many deputy positions as we can with the restructure of the Lyon County Sheriff's Office and moving the command staff throughout the county, the position of lieutenant and captain have been combined. So having those extra lieutenants was not necessary. However, we did keep three lieutenants and those lieutenant positions will fill in certain spots that used to be under captain positions in the old administration. The gang grant was not redone, and so we were going to lose that deputy position. So by replacing one lieutenant with one deputy in that position, in essence, we're gaining two deputies for one lieutenant. Which is a is a pretty fair trade off.
Any questions? Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I think it's important that we support our new sheriff, so I would like to make a motion if if I may.
You bet. Go for it.
Let me get that. Okay, so like to make a motion that we approve the elimination of one lieutenant position and the creation of one deputy position and use the additional savings to keep grant funded deputy position as the regional gang grant funding stops on December thirty first, two thousand twenty two.
Have a second?
A second. That that, Mr. Sheriff, I do have a question though. Sheriff Pope.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good, doesn't it? This this gang unit, that's that's the the co unit with Douglas County?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second and further discussion. Any public comment? Anything on the board? I don't see anything. And my comment, though, would be that after the presentation that the gang unit gave us, I was very impressed with the work the work they're doing. And so I certainly support this issue. So let's have a vote on this. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So votes four zero passes and we'll go on to twenty B for possible action, prove contract with Joiner and Associates LLC in an amount not to exceed twenty four thousand five hundred to provide professional services related to the promotional testing process in the sheriff's office. We have that information with our packet. So Sheriff, you're on again.
So this item wasn't originally budgeted for, but what we found over the, what I found over the past decade is that the promotional process, the sheriff's office seems to have a take from perceived bias from the administration picking the the people who are being promoted. State law now requires larger agencies to have a third party conduct the outside testing for promotional possibilities. However, several other small agencies are using it to avoid litigation. And basically, Joiner and Associates, they put together the test for the sergeants. It would be three scenario based tests and a written test. Joiner and Associates handles all the creation of the test, the proctors, everything. The administration does not review the test. So all the bias is taken out of it. The company will produce a list, a ranked list, one through how many ever deputies decide to test for sergeant, and they'll provide us with that list and we'll promote off of that list in order. They'll also be conducting the lieutenant's testing. The lieutenant's testing, they have given us a little more discretion as far as selecting the lieutenants. Because they're a little bit closer to command staff, especially in the restructure of the agency. I would like to do a sergeant promotional exam once a year. The sergeantal promotional exam portion is thirteen thousand five hundred. The lieutenant promotion exam is nine thousand. I don't foresee in the near future, doing more lieutenant testing in the next several years, but I do foresee the need for the sergeant's test and to keep the list going. Douglas County uses their services, Sparks, Washoe County, and I believe Reno PD. I know in the last several promotions, there's been grievances filed and litigation, and I believe just solve that issue.
We have any questions up here for Sheriff? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just not really a question, just a concern. You know, under, you know, the financial department compacts that you plan on underspending other parts of your budget. So to to cover the twenty four five?
So I've been made aware that we do have extra money available in our training budget. I know there was talk of the training budget being expanded for training due to decision making. The supervisors in the agency did attend a leadership training that was a week long this summer, and I believe that that's what that extra money was set aside for. So it's it's never been told to us.
I just get a little worried when it says plans on, you know, without concrete information, but I I agree with this step with the independent third party testing. I think it's a good move.
Yeah, I think it'll do well for morale, for attention.
And anything to avoid litigation is a good thing. So with that, Mr. Sheriff, if you're ready, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I do have one question and I'll let you go for it. On the, I noticed that we're going to have six assessors and they're going to be trained to assess the scenarios or whatever that are presented by Joiner. Who are those assessors going to be? And how are they going to assess?
They're administrators from other agencies.
Okay.
So you will get administrative level people from other agencies such as Churchill County, Douglas County, Carson City, Fallon Police Department, sparse police department. And so the way I understand it is Joiner and Associates brings them in if they haven't used them already to prompt the tests and they give them the guidelines on what they're scoring for. So it's, I believe she said it was a four hour training for the assessors as well, and that's all covered in the costs from joining.
All right. I I just wanted to know because, you know, if we were going to use our own deputies, then the bias is still there. So I was hoping that we would have, you know, outside agencies come in and that would take care of that. So I do appreciate the information. That makes me feel much better now. So we have a motion and no?
We haven't made.
That's right. You you were going to make a motion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I moved that we approve a contract with Joiner and Associates LLC in an amount not to exceed twenty four thousand five hundred dollars to provide professional services related to the promotional testing process in the sheriff's office.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Any public discussion before we take a vote? Don't see anybody in the audience. Don't see anybody on the board. So I will say, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Four oh. Sir, you are free to leave.
Before Chairman Hockaday, before he leaves, just congratulate your newly sworn in officers and thank them as well.
And I just want to acknowledge the hard work that the the Lyon County Sheriff's Office and the deputies have done throughout the storm and all employees of Lyon County. They've worked diligently to make sure the community stays safe and we really appreciate that, respect that. So thank you.
Well, and I'm sorry I didn't bring that up. We always kind of forget about the the deputies that are out there fighting the weather and fighting the roads. So yes, very much. Thank you and pass that on.
Doing an awesome job. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Sheriff, before you leave, just wanted to offer my congratulations to you and I look forward to to your administration and working working with you together.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Go get to work. All right. So we're going to go back to the consent agenda. I believe it's twelve A to sixteen B, if I'm not mistaken. Let me get back. Let me get that to the Oh, yeah. Yep, that's right. We skipped that advisory. Thank you for keeping me straight on that. So number eleven Advisory Board reports. Do we have any Advisory Board? Looks like Gina's iPhone. Gina, you will, if you want to give your report.
Thank you. It's Gina Lee, Dayton Regional Advisory Board. And we're looking forward to a productive year. We have a full board this year, and so that's going to be good. I also serve on the Central Lyon County Parks and Recreation Board, and we still have two seats open. So we certainly would like anyone in the community to to jump in to help us out with that. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and encourage them to stay warm and safe.
Thank you. Any questions for Gina? Do we have any other Advisory Board reports? And we will then move on to the consent agenda twelve A through sixteen B. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'm moving that we approve the consent agenda items twelve A through sixteen B.
I'll second that myself. Any, I think we're we're good on that. We have to do all matters listed under the consent agenda or considered routine. Maybe acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action, which we're doing and without an extensive hearing. Maybe acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action which we're doing and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Should have read that first. Um, but we got it in the record and I don't see anybody here or on the board, so let's, uh. Move on to any discussion, public input. I don't see any of that. Do we have a? Vote here. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nobody? Four oh for approving consent agenda. Let's move on and to the next page. Assessor report for possible action, appoint Michael Glass. As chairman of the Lyon County Board of Equalization. We do have, uh, the letter of appointment there. I believe I'm supposed to make that appointment.
Yes, sir.
Yep. So I will appoint. Michael Glass as chairman of the Lyon County Board of Equalization. That pretty much all I have to do. And I guess we have a vote or is it just done? Yes, that's it, right? Just a point?
Yep.
Good?
That's correct.
I think that's all we do.
It is.
Yep. Just want to make sure we're right here and don't have to bring it back on the agenda.
It was, yeah, it's an appointment. It was in the backup online.
Yeah, I don't see it here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, uh, Trev Lines, Lyon County Assessor. Yeah, I accompanied with the, the statute that says exactly what you just said where the chair, uh, appoints the board member.
Right, just a point, so we'll move on.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Troy. That takes care of that. Alright. Item eighteen, county manager. For possible action, appoint county commissioners and staff to the following boards, commissions and committees for calendar year twenty twenty-three. And I do have a comment on this, uh, for discussion. We are going to have another manager or another manager, another commissioner in February. Uh, I was hoping we could table this and tell them when we do have our fifth commissioner to save us the time of divvying up all the additional duties now and then redoing it. In February, um, what I would recommend is that we keep our additional duties. And wherever, since we have a Keller replacing a Keller, we would keep that, um. Well, again, we're going to, would be revisited in February. And wherever Ken Gray was, uh, assigned, we would. Cover those meetings as they came up for the next month. Now, it's just for discussion. I'm just saying that. It, you know, we'll, we'll make all the appointments then basically in one month. I don't think a lot's going to happen in the next month. Where we've got to worry about it. I just. Was thinking that might be easiest rather than. Treading through it now and then doing it again in four weeks. So discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I think there's a couple of these that we need to do today simply because of. The timing of the year and the fact that we are entering into a legislative session. And those, yeah, there, there's a, like I said, there, there's a couple of them that I think we, we need to appoint today or at least discuss today. And then the rest of them, yeah, we, we could, you know, we, we can wait till another month, but I think, um. The, it's listed on here as the Quad County Legislative Coalition. I guess it's really not the Tri-County. I, I think we should fill that and I would be interested in being on that. And then also I've been serving as the alternate to the NACO board directors and I would like to be appointed as the primary. For that, so that, so that we are fully staffed on NACO. But that's just my thought.
Chairman Hockaday.
Jacobson.
I think, I don't think we have to fill the NACO one if he's the, if he's the backup already, he, he's filling it.
Right.
So, and so I, I guess, um, to. To answer, um, Commissioner Ha- Henderson's, um, concern, I have no problem with him filling in on the Quad County Legislative Coalition until. The February meeting if we decide to postpone this until it's filled.
Okay. And that's kind of what's looking at here, the alternate, you're going to fill in until we get to that point. I just, I just can't see duplicating the effort going through.
That's fine, that's fine on NACO, but to, to Tri-County Legislative Coalition, we, we, right now we have, we had Commissioner Gray and Commissioner Keller.
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to start meeting here pretty soon, so I, I. I don't know. Doesn't matter.
Well, I think I, didn't I, didn't I just put?
That, that, that was, that was NACO. That, that's not the Tri-County Legislative Coalition.
Quad County.
Right, so I, I think I just said that I would support you filling that.
Okay.
And that's a. Uh, any other discussion on that?
That's a two thing on that, uh, board. So again, I would like to be on that board. Two people can go to that board.
Okay. So we would fill the slot right now with Commissioner Henderson and yourself. Okay, let's move. So we'll see, we have someone else step up to the mic there, uh, Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record. If the board would be so kind as to appoint the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and Public. Agency Compensation Trust. I'm currently serving as that. I'm the president of, of the pool organization. And we do have meetings on a regular basis. I'd hate for that. I'm wondering if that's something maybe the board would consider appointing for the full year on that particular.
Okay.
Chairman Hockaday, I'd be interested in filling in on that one.
Okay, any, I mean, I have no problem pointing that if you want to do that, uh, Nevada, Northern Nevada Development Authority. We would be interested in that then, Commissioner Jacobson.
I was.
It's not Nevada.
Alright.
Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool in Nevada.
Oh, the pool. Okay. Cool pack, okay.
Currently and have been for the past eighteen years representative for the county on those. There's an intensive amount of training that they send you to. For that.
Okay, I still have no objection to that recommendation. Um, so if, uh, Commissioner Jacobson volunteered for that position, then so be it.
Yeah, I think we're still confused.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that, that, and I don't want to speak for Commissioner Jacobson, but I think he was talking about the. The Northern Nevada Development.
Authority. That's what you're talking about, right?
No, the.
It was, uh, it was the Nevada Public Agency.
Public Agency Insurance Pool.
And the public agency.
That's the one you're going for. Alright, I'd heard the other thing. Yeah. Yeah.
If somebody else would be interested in the public trust, that's fine. Or the Public Agency Compensation Trust, um, I would like to sit in on the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool.
Same person?
Should be the same person, then I would gladly be on that.
Okay.
Both.
So we will do that. I'm agreeable to that. It's not a problem.
Um, but we, we, we.
So we're looking at Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and Public Agency Compensation Trust. And, uh, Commissioner Jacobson volunteered to do both since Mr. Foley recommended that the person be the same person for both, right?
I was recommending that I continue to serve in that capacity.
Okay, so you're, I, I.
I thought you said Commissioner Gray was on it with you.
Yeah. Alright.
Oh. So you don't need us.
No.
I need you to appoint to be going.
Well, okay, alright. I guess so. Now I'm confused. I thought that we were going to stay status quo on most of these, so if you were already doing it, yeah, we would.
Right, and what I was saying because the, so the discussion was, let's do this for a month, is can we just appoint for the full year on those?
Uh, I would definitely say.
I honestly.
Yeah.
I thought that was.
Yeah, and I'm.
Josh Foley, I totally support you.
When, when you said you'd been doing it for so long and thinking, well, you've had enough, so that's why I'm picking up, let's go ahead and reissue some of this, this, uh, job to.
All good, yes.
Alright.
Mr. Foley is my man.
And I'm writing in ink, so you know, what am I going to do? I should have been in pencil and eraser. Uh, so we're going to keep you there. Gotcha. So where are we? Let's look at where we are here. Quad County Legislative Coalition. That's going to be you for now.
You as Wes, Mr. Commissioner Henderson.
Right. And. Commissioner Keller, you'll be the backup and keep that for now. We will again, um. Look at these in a month. So do we have anything else that we need to worry about to fill? The positions so that we can cover them for one month until we have our fifth commissioner. Basically, it'll be status quo except for the one we just discussed.
So typically, um, I, I was just told that typically on the, um, the. Quad County or Tri-County Legislative Coalition, that it's usually the chair and the vice chair that, that do sit on that, so, um, so you might want to have both, yeah.
So. Okay. So I would then be, the networks, yeah. Alright. So, and we're kind of re, you know, a, a go over thing and make sure we've got everything covered, but the big thing is we do cover the meetings if anything comes up. Uh, please be, I'll jump in and get those meetings, but yeah, I don't believe there's a lot going on yet in January. You know, not for the majority of these, these appointments. So any, any other thing on the board here that we need to discuss in appointments until February?
Just, so I guess I'll make a motion, I'll take a stab at this motion.
Sure.
Chairman Hockaday, I make a motion that we appoint. Josh Foley for the year to the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, Public Agency Compensation Trust. We appoint Commissioner Hockaday to the Quad County Legislative Coalition with Wes Henderson, um, backing him up. And the other positions we hold off until the February meeting with, uh, the current. Positions that are held by county commissioner, state status quo, and we fill in the others as needed.
A second now.
Okay, we've got a motion and second, uh, we'll have discussion. Any public input on this motion? I think there would be any. I don't see anything on the board. I don't see anybody out in the audience, so what I'd like to do then is take a vote on doing this at this point. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, four oh on that vote and we'll move on to the next item. Eighteen B for possible action authorized county manager attend the twenty twenty-three National Association of Counties NACO Legislative Conference in Washington DC, February eleventh through fourteenth, twenty twenty-three for an approximate cost of three thousand five hundred. Approximately requested by Commissioner Hockaday. Um, let me just make a quick comment before this. Uh, I'm probably going to have shoulder surgery. I'm supposed to know by now, but they came by appointment for Friday. I had it on last Friday, then Monday, now it's Friday because of the weather. Uh, I will probably either be in surgery or in, um, physical therapy. Or I'll be all bandaged up with a big gigantic sling, so I'm basically going to be, uh, backing out of that trip. But we would still have, I believe from our discussion last time would be Commissioner Keller. And this is one of the other reasons why I wanted to discuss and authorize, uh, county manager to go. So it would have two people there, including the county manager. So. Moving right along to the county manager, what is your input?
Um, no additional input. I, um, happy to, happy to go, um, if that's what the board wants to.
Mr. Chair, just, just, just a comment and not really germane to, to the effect of, to this item, but. If you're not going to be able to go, then we may want to consider sending another commissioner as well.
Okay.
Um, but I'd be, I'd be more than happy to move that we authorize the county manager to attend. The twenty twenty-three National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Washington DC, February eleventh through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. For an approximate cost of three thousand five hundred dollars.
Do we have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, four oh on that. Um, and I just wanted to say that since we discussed this last meeting as an agenda item. We had two commissioners appointed or not appointed, but we discussed having two commissioners go. Uh, question for the district attorney, if we go ahead and, um. Pick the two right now. We would not, that wouldn't be possible because we're not on the agenda, but we did pick last month to have two go.
So I, I believe the motion last month was, I actually didn't, uh, point the.
Didn't appoint, it just said two.
We discussed it and it just said two, so.
Okay, that's the way I read it, but I just want to make sure we're not. I mean, it was. Discussed and, and authorized for two commissioners last month. So what, that was going to be basically Commissioner Keller and myself. I'm not going to be going, so we just basically replace me and that's okay.
Well, that's on the agenda to replace, uh, to send the county manager. Appointing another commissioner to go is not on the agenda today.
Right, but, but.
This was in addition to.
Right.
This was, it wasn't to replace me, but we discussed it, so.
I mean, I don't think at the meeting today you can decide that if, if you appointed two to go and that's a decision that's made, that's fine. But you can't discuss today who those.
Okay.
Who are and decide that matters.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, so we've got to get that on the next agenda, um, for the, uh, actual two that are going to be going. I, I just assumed that since we. Authorized two commissioners, that this was an addition for our third person to go. But we'll. Do as told by the legal eagle. So we are doing the eighteen B, which is, um. We've got. That passed, so you will be going to DC also. Eighteen C for possible action proclaim the month of January is National Radon Action Month. In Lyon County, this is requested by Chris Kelly of UNR. Uh, we have a proclamation, National Radon Action Month and Radon Proclamation Request, so. We can see.
And, uh, Andrew Haskin, interim county manager for the record, this is just, this is something that we do every year in support of National Radon, uh, for this month, or Action Month, I should say. You and I request this every year, so. That is what this agenda.
So I need to read the proclamation. I'll do that. I, I just wanted to, uh, let the public know that there is a Nevada radon test kit location listing. I brought it with me. Um, so if anybody's interested in getting those kits. We have the listing, so you can find out the one here's on Main Street where you can actually get your radon kit. So that's information for you here. So proclamation declaring January twenty twenty-third as National Radon Action Month in Lyon County, Nevada. Whereas many Lyon County residents don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas. That is the primary cause of lung cancer amongst non-smokers, the second leading cause of lung cancer in smokers. And whereas the US EPA estimates twenty-one thousand people in the US die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure. And lung and bronchus cancer kill more people in a year than any other cancer. Whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, choking, drowning, or other fi- or home fires. And whereas any home in Lyon County may have elevated levels of radon. Even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four. Pickle curries per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer. As smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day, and whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level. And testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas University of Nevada Extension Nevada Radon Education Program and the US Environmental Protection Agency support efforts to encourage all Lyon County residents to test their homes. For radon mitigate elevated levels of radon and have new homes built with radon reducing materials and features. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-three as National Radon Action Month. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-three as National Radon Action Month in Lion County, Nevada. Adopted third day of January twenty twenty-three, and our seal. Any? Comments? For that. So I just read the resolution. I'm not sure. Is there anything else we need to do on that other than read the resolution? Just move right on to nineteen then?
No.
You know, we have to, we have to actually vote on making it.
Yeah.
Yeah, to adopt it. Have a, an adoption here.
Mister Chair, I moved that we adopt proclamation declaring January twenty twenty-three is National Radon Action Month in Lion County, Nevada.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Well, we didn't do public comment. All right, there was no public comment for that proclamation, so we will then move on to nineteen. I'll catch all this stuff eventually. Nineteen A for possible action, discuss potential appointment of the interim county manager. In a permanent capacity, potential alternatives thereto, and provide direction to staff, including without limitation. The preparation of an employment agreement. This is a discussion only. So we will continue our discussion on our interim manager. It's for possible action, but it is a, just a discussion, so. Discussion. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I asked for this agenda item. When we appointed Mister Haskins as the interim county manager, we did so for a, up to a six-month period of time. We're about halfway through that. I think it'd be time, you know, for us to, to do a little evaluation and see. How we wanna move forward, you know, that we have several options. We can, you know, continue the interim period for another three months. Or if we're satisfied with Mister Haskins' job performance, which I certainly am, and this last weekend. You know, prove that point even more, we could. Direct, direct staff to. To prepare a con, employment contract with him to make him the county manager. Or we can say, we're not happy at all, we wanna go out and get more applications, so. I just wanted to put this, you know, it looks like we're about halfway through, so I figured it'd be a good time to put it on the agenda so we can discuss how we wanna move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Hockday. I'd be curious as to our HR department's take, so I'm gonna be all ears.
Okay, Commissioner Keller. Okay, then we will actually have Eric take care of that. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Eric Malavsky, HR Director. Andrew has been an absolute pleasure to work with. He had the benefit of working here for a little over a year before he took on the interim appointment. It was evident even when he was Community Development Director that he's a person committed to doing the right thing, an honest person, a smart person. In these three months, we've seen the same things that Commissioner Henderson and probably some other folks have seen as well. I'm happy to talk if you guys want about what a recruitment process might look like, timeframes and the costs. And the process would be, I can, I can speak to that as much depth as you want to. Ultimately, you all pick, we don't pick our boss, you guys make that. But from staffs and the things, I think, to be fair to Andrew, you know, we'd be happy to see him from the contract I brought back.
Thank you. Appreciate that input. Any other comments? My comment would be that I've been very, very happy with Mister Haskins. He's called before every meeting, wanting to know if I had questions on anything. Every time I've called him, he's come up with the answers in a very fast manner. And I have no problem myself with preparing an employment agreement based on his last three months of employment. So. I guess that's, we can, you know, look at the staff coming up with that employment agreement. If everybody here believes that's the way to go.
I would support that.
You support that? Okay. Do we have any public comment? I have Mister Homestead on the line. Doug, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Doug Homestead, Facilities Director. I just wanna say, as Jeff was a great boss and Andrew's really taken over the helm and. And been very easy to work with. He's very direct with us and very supportive, and I think he'd be an excellent county manager. Thank you.
And thank you. So do we just make a motion to direct the, to go forward?
Mister Chair, I would like to make the, make a motion that we direct staff to. Move forward with preparing an employment contract with Andrew Haskins as County Manager.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a public comment, and we have, again, Gina's iPhone. Gina, you'd like to talk?
Thank you, Gina Lee, for the record. I, I believe it would be wonderful to have Andrew as our county manager. While he was acting, he came out to the community of Dayton and had a meeting with the citizenry here who were very concerned about. Some things happening on the south side of the river. During that meeting, Andrew was just calm and reassuring. And I believe that at the end of that meeting, the entire community went away. Went away from it feeling a lot better than they had when they walked in the door. So I think he'd be a great addition to the county. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other we have, Mister Holman?
Good morning. I, I would just like to tag on to what, what Doug said. Andrew has been very responsive as, as. As my boss, and he's, he's always there twenty-four seven when I've needed to call him, either on emergency management stuff or whatever it is. He's always there, very supportive, from what I've seen to, to all of us department heads, not just myself, so. I would, I would strongly agree with what the other comments made that we, we move forward with Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Ms. Lopez.
Here Lopez, for the record, I concur with everything else that's been said before me, and also like to add on that. He works very hard and he does a lot of due diligence and research and has a lot of meetings and talks with his staff very well, and so he has my support.
Thank you. Okay, we now need to. Oh, yep, geez, we're getting a bunch of them on the board here. Ms. Holmes, you're.
I'm just gonna jump on the bandwagon to also say how supportive and helpful Andrew has been. Prior to his appointment, I could call him and get assistance in all of my different projects and hopes and dreams for our county. When he was our Community Development Director, and then also now as the County Manager, he's been an excellent communicator, so I'll just jump on that bandwagon. That I think he is very well qualified and we appreciate him.
Thank you. And it looks like we have Elaine St. John. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to support him as well. I think Andrew was great. He came out to Dayton while we had snow. And everyone was waiting out in the snow to vote, and I just thought he went above and beyond the call of duty. And I really think he's a fabulous candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Ms. Keller.
Want to say some good things about Andrew. So I guess I actually have to sign my name and I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyways.
You also have to stand up for the record.
Yeah.
Anyways, so yeah, by the Keller for the record. I just wanna say, you know, being the one that made the phone call to Andrew one evening. And said, you know, hey, I, I know you've only been with the county a little over a year. But yeah, with his communication skills and, and talking to other people within the county. You know, I asked him, you know, what, what do you think for an interim? We were in a position that, you know, we're a county manager or a government, and we didn't have a county manager. And so after talking to his wife, who was out of town and on the phone, he called me back that evening. You know, and said, hey, you know, I don't know how it's gonna work, how it's gonna fit, but I'll do the best job I possibly can until the commission figures it out. And he stepped up when we needed somebody, and I could say in the last three months, because I just stepped off that board. He's met every expectation and above. I think he's went above and beyond. In making sure that he connected with each and every commissioner, every department. And no, he didn't always have the answer, but he went and found it. So I think you got a good guy sitting over here. And like I said, I couldn't sit back there and not at least stand up here and say that. Thank you.
And thank you. Any other comments before we move on? And we have the comptroller gonna talk about money.
For the record, I wasn't gonna get up because I figured we'd get through the meeting quicker that way, but I do wanna be on the record. That Andrew is an absolute pleasure to work with, and I respect his integrity and his opinion and his judgment, so thank you.
Thank you. I have to agree with everything. I'll keep it short. Whether I've agreed with Andrew or not, if I disagree, he always puts up a really good presentation for his case. And that, I appreciate that, you know, same here with the commissioners, you know, we can agree to disagree, and at the end of the day, we move on. We do our job, and that's the way Andrew is. If we disagree, we go to lunch, you know, it's not a big deal. We just do the business the best we can, and, and that's what I've noticed about him. He is so dedicated to doing the right thing, and I appreciate that. So without further ado, we have a vote here to actually prepare an employment agreement. And all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, four oh for offering the employment agreement. Please prepare it. Looks like we've gotten through to agenda requests, and what's nice is actually, if I've got the agenda, once I got the right one, it's got everything on it. It's not missing. I don't know how I keep getting these agendas that are, you know, missing stuff and changed. So agenda requests, I'll start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockday. Just, I know I made this request, I believe, at the last meeting, but just. I think we need to do as a board a follow-up on the, with the DA or whatever on the water meeting we had in Silver Springs, so. Find out what might be going on there, etc. So however that might look, I'm not sure, but I, I don't. I mean, I think we just need to meet and discuss some of the items from that meeting. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Keller, nothing. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I, I believe we're having an item on the January nineteenth agenda discussing grants. And, and so I would like to expand that a little bit if we can to include our. Or if, or if it has to be a separate item, I don't know, but I wanna talk about our representation at the federal level with our delegation and. Possibly look at entering into some kind of agreement with a firm back in DC to look after Lion County's interest.
And. I would have a request, not necessarily for the next meeting, but to get into the works here. Cause. Andrew and I drove around the area looking at some blighted property. And it might be a good idea to revisit our ordinances on that. That we've, we've gotta look at some of the situations that are already ongoing. And how we can handle those things in the future with a little bit better. Timing and authority. I certainly don't wanna cause a lot of problems, but I do wanna see what's in the ordinances. We need to see what's there. We've had. Lots of people call and talk about different problems that are going on in the, in the county, so. That's something that I would like to look at. Probably it'd be good for a workshop if we're gonna deal with an ordinance and have the staff there that needs to be involved. So that's where I'm at, and that should take care of item twenty-one. Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair, just. Happy New Year. Hopefully, it's gonna get better, or at least warmer. And I look forward to working, like I said earlier, I look forward to working with, with this commission. In the future, and I, and I'm looking, really looking forward to when I get this seat next to me filled. Nice to have five people up here.
Mister Keller.
No comment.
No comments. Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Just, everyone drive safe. Have a happy new year.
I support that comment. Please be safe out there. Road's really slick. We plan on having another storm, I guess, tonight and tomorrow. And continuing on almost the rest of the month. So. That will be all of my comments. Just be safe. Do we have a closed session? Outstanding. Public participation, I'll just read this again, election be taken on any item and tell us proper agendas. Anticipated the public participation be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation or ask to state their name for the record and are, will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item. But before the board takes any action, are there any final public comments for this meeting today? Third of January twenty twenty-three. Nothing on Zoom, nobody in here. I did have one last thing to say, though. I see Mister Claus in here. Congratulations on being appointed to the planning commission, and we look forward to working with you in the future. So that having been said, meetings adjourned at ten, eleven thirteen.